Awesome. All right, welcome. Okay, so I'm going to call this meeting to order and welcome everybody to the May 26, 2020 School Committee Meeting. And obviously, we are running this meeting through Zoom. We're going to open up with announcements. I do want to remind everybody that we are going to, after our regular session. Sue?
Can you do a roll call to open?
Sure, yeah. I just want, I forgot to mention to everybody before we do the roll call that we will be doing our regular session, then going into executive session, and then coming back to adjourn. Okay? So we will open with a roll call vote. Marissa?
Marissa Curry, aye.
Jonathan?
Jonathan Schmidt, aye.
Maren?
Maren Goldstein, aye.
Lori?
Lori Garcia, aye.
Shannon? You're muted, Shannon. You're muted. There you go.
Shannon Dunham, aye. The EPSD website is down, just so you guys know, I can't get in.
Huh. Well, you're on.
I'm on my phone, I can't see.
Gotcha, okay. And Mayor? You're on mute still.
Um, yes, Mayor is here, and I think something's wrong with our server because both the school site and the same server is not catching up.
And Cynthia Kuzinski is here. All right, now we're ready to start, and we'll go to announcements. Superintendent Leclerc, do we have announcements?
I do not have any announcements this evening.
All right. Then we will go to public speak, and Marissa will allow people one at a time. If anybody wants to speak, please signal, and she will unmute you.
Yeah, this is, I think I've been unmuted. This is Sarah Hunter. I'm here to say hello, but also, I just wanted to hear the COVID update. I don't really have anything to say for public speak, except that you guys are doing a great job in a really crappy situation, and it's good to see you all again. So, thank you.
See you too.
Oh, and also, I want to confirm that there is definitely a problem with the website, and I actually put in a ticket for my work laptop, because I thought that that was the problem, and so I'm going to go and undo that ticket, because I really thought it was my computer's fault, so.
Anybody else for public speak?
If you...
Do you see any other signal? I do not.
If you don't have video showing, but you want to do public speak, you can use the little hand icon. I'm not missing anybody. I'm not seeing anyone else signaling at this point.
Okay. All right, then we will go on with the meeting. Do we have any subcommittee updates? Do we want to start with Finance?
Finance Subcommittee has not met. We are, I've put out a request, so please, Allison and Jonathan, get back to me if next Monday works as soon as possible, and Dale as well, and then hopefully by tomorrow. Then if I've got confirmation, then I'll be able to put in the meeting agenda, so that we can get that on the books for Monday morning, Monday afternoon, excuse me.
Okay. Policy? Do we have a policy update?
I do not have one, no. Sorry, I didn't get ahold of everybody.
And Wellness?
There's no, there's no wellness update, except that I hope that everyone remains well, but I, I do want to say that I noticed when you were asking that the yellow frame was lighting up for Peter Marks, and I'm not sure if he was, he realizes he's muted. It seemed like he was trying to have sound emitting from there. I just want to make sure that nobody had public speak, because it was lighting up.
I'm going to unmute him right now to give him a chance.
Sometimes people don't know.
I am altered, I'm just listening, but thank you very much.
Okay, because I did see the yellow. Sorry, I just was making sure, because I do this with students all day long.
Thanks, Lori, I wouldn't want to miss somebody.
Thank you.
Okay, so now we have our school closure update.
Okay, thank you, everybody. So I can let everyone know that, a couple of things. Teachers have begun to go in and close up classrooms. They're doing it in a very safe, staggered format, and it is, I've, I've heard, I talked to the union president today, who said it was sad, you know, the, this is not the way we thought things would end this year, even though we've known that we were not going to come back for a little while. That was kind of putting the final, the final comment on it, I guess, if you will. So they've closed, they're closing up their classrooms, they're doing that over the next few weeks, so of course, we can start summer cleaning earlier. We have prefaced it by saying anyone that has health concerns and wants to wait until they feel it, they're more comfortable coming into the buildings, they absolutely can. We've been working in collaboration with our maintenance team, so that they make sure they clean any area that people have gone through. Also, in that process, teachers at the elementary level, in the middle school level, are beginning to bag students' personal items and putting names on bags, and then there will be a timeframe in June where those items will be returned to families, and we won't be having families necessarily come in the building. They'll pick a time slot, their bag will be placed outside the door. I think at Whitebrook, they're doing something around the whole circle with the bags, so we're just trying to think about safety and getting items back to families. At the high school, with the high school students, it's a little bit different, and they'll be given timeframes to go in, and I think they're still working on that, because they have to clear, you know, their locker, the locker rooms where they might have gym clothes and things like that, so it'll be a little bit more involved, but that won't even happen until June, which is next week, by the way, but we're doing that in a phased manner. I would also say that, just a reminder, the drive-through graduation will be all next week, and it will be filmed by East Hampton Media. We hope to have a ceremony in August, and the governor has alluded to the fact that we should be able to do something if we keep on the current trajectory that we're on. Mr. Evans did send out some preliminary information to families today, or he is sending it out today, to remind families that we still have lots of rules we're going to need to abide by, but he wants to get that information out, so that for planning purposes, people kind of know who they can invite to come to this graduation and what the expectations are, so that's underway. We sent the first of a couple surveys out to families today to get their reactions on how the remote learning experience has been too far, so far, and what, if any improvements we can make for the remainder of this year, or if we're using the same format going into next year, some adjustments that we can make. We will be doing a survey probably in June, which we will ask families a few more questions, primarily if they are planning on sending their child to school in the fall, and if so, if they would be using our transportation. So those are some pieces of information that we're going to want to gather before the end of the school year, and we know that that may be in flux, but we just want to get some, some general ideas where families are at at this point, so that's where they will be coming.
Allison, can I ask you a question about that? How can parents decide if they're going to send their kids to school if they don't know yet what the reopening plan will be? Are you just wondering who's staying within the public, the East Hampton School District? Not whether or not they're coming in?
Yes and no. I think there are, there are definitely families, because they have a family member that might be immune compromised, or they may not feel that because of their work-life situation, they may have the flexibility to keep their children home for a period of time, they may have already made up their mind, and so that's kind of the dipstick we want to put out there to families, to see what people are thinking. You know, the reality is, school needs to happen for a majority of people, because most families have people that have jobs outside the home, two-parent incomes or jobs, so we know that school is a very viable option for a lot of families, but for some families that may not want to do that, for either personal reasons or financial reasons, they may not want to do that, we want to kind of dipstick that, and, and we will probably do the survey a couple of times, but in, for planning purposes, we want to know what people are thinking, what's on their mind. And then the other piece...
Allison, if I could just add to that, I mean, I guess, if, as a parent, I'm wondering, if I'm just asked that question with no information about what's being offered, that's very confusing. It feels sort of, so I guess I wonder without some sort of like, these are what we're considering, or this is what we're projecting right now, the environment will be like, without any kind of understanding what precautions, again, it's, it's still tentative, it's still in process, but without sort of saying, these are the parameters of what we're seeing we're going to do to keep your children safe in our building, I don't know how, as a parent, I could just say yes or no to that kind of a question. So I guess I'm just really wondering, the, the, I guess I would like maybe this group to have more of a conversation around that, too. I know there's a lot of really good articles out there, talking both about the, the really strong need for in-school, the needs to be out of school, the impacts on low-income communities, I mean, there's a lot of different conversations to be had. I think that, I think it'd be very challenging as a parent just to get that question, and really be able to give an honest answer, and as a school committee member, I feel like, I'd like us to be having a little bit more conversation around what that's, the different options are looking like, too, before we're polling the, the district members about what they're going to be doing for next year.
And so, can I?
Sorry.
Go ahead, Lori.
Well, I just want to say that I truly appreciated the superintendent's survey. When I read it today, from a teacher's standpoint, I realized from a parental standpoint, Maren, that it's all unknown, but I, I appreciated the questions, are you getting enough contact with teachers, are you getting too many emails? All of those types of things would be very helpful to me if I were a teacher in this district, because these are things that I'm wondering all the time when I reach out to my 90-plus families. So I know you're speaking to one aspect of the survey, but it's important to just get, as she said, a dipstick right now, how are families feeling? Nobody knows what's going to happen come September, even come August, so if we keep on getting a read on the feelings of the parents, then it's most helpful in our planning.
But, but I would put back to that, I think I agree with you in terms of the current survey, you're asking questions about how's our teaching going. It's a very different question to say, basically, you're asking for a fear-based reaction of saying, are you coming back to school next fall if we're open or not? That's, and obviously, it's not going to be quite that blunt of a question. I certainly know that you wouldn't put it that bluntly, but it, it sort of is what we're asking, to be asking a question about projecting out to the future, so, to the fall, and it's different than just sort of saying, how's it going in online teaching? So again, I think that, I would say we might want to have more conversation and a little bit about understanding before we're starting to send that kind of thing out there, but, you know.
So if I could just, and that's, and Maren, that's why I said that we're not sending those questions out now, so let me, let me tell you a little bit about what's going to happen between now and when we send those questions out. At the district level, we're forming subcommittees made up of faculty and administration, and each one of those committees is voluntarily meeting four times over the month of June, not to make decisions, but to bring up any concerns or issues related to that topic, like, for example, facilities. We have a facilities Subcommittee that's going to be starting to convene in June, and their purpose will be to consider all of the issues related to facilities, and so they're going to be doing that work. We have about six committees that will be meeting, and what we are waiting for also in June is the recommendations from the Department of Ed's Working Group, and they have a work, they, they have a working group that will make, according to the commissioner, approximately 85% of the decisions around what will happen in September. So we're told that that information is coming out in June, so I'm waiting for the commissioner's information, and I'm waiting for the East Hampton concerns, and then we're going to put something together to present to families, and we will ask that, those, those couple of questions about next year, and kind of get a read, but you're absolutely right, Maren, we need to give the precursor information, which we don't have yet, so that's, that's kind of the next step of what we're, what we're doing. You know, I know that people sometimes wonder, what do you guys do during the day? Well, we have all these, all these committees and all these Zoom meetings, and I know Sarah's in the room right now, Sarah's running one of the committees with the, with, oh, she's running two committees, she's telling me. I think she's running one around the, the wellness and health, you know, working with the nurses, and some members of our faculty around what are all the health issues that we need to consider, and what are the practices that the nurses are thinking about incorporating? Do we need to add more nursing space? There are all these wonderings that we have, and so that's one of the groups, and I think Sarah's other group is maybe something to do with special populations. We've got a before and after-school programming, what are the wonderings that we have about operating, operating a before and after-school program? There are ELL populations, our special ed populations, so her, her committees will be meeting in the month of June, and they will make some recommendations, they'll voice some concerns, some kind of frequently asked questions, if you will, so we can put together some documents for families to try to address some of the questions or areas that they might be considering or thinking about, so that's the work we're doing right now. And so that's, so that second, that, that survey, the, the one that went out today is fine, but the other piece about September, you're right, it's not ready yet, and it probably won't go until the end of June, and then we'll probably do it again in July and August, so just to see where families are. I do also want to mention during the COVID piece that central office, we've, we've had the opportunity during the shutdown to, one of us can be in central office at a time for a very limited amount of hours, because the state is starting to reopen, this week we've been given permission by the mayor to cautiously start staggering more time in central office, so we've been working with our city health agent, Bree, to come up with a schedule, and so now we'll, we'll have two to three people in the office at all times with all our kind of safety guidelines in place, and so we're starting to make some first initial steps towards getting back to like a more regular type environment, and I know at the school offices, they're starting to do that as well. I would advise families, still, I would not show up at any of our schools, I would call and make an appointment, because at any given time, either a secretary or an administrator might be in the building, but not generally both, so, you know, depending on what you need and, and what transactions you need to take on, you should really call and make an appointment, so I think that's all for my COVID update.
Can I ask one more question, Allison? And then I guess Maren has one. So in terms of reopening, I understand you're going to have all these small committees, and they're going to be looking at information. Are you then going to create a small pieces of those committees, committee, that will work on designing options for reopening? I know some schools are having a reopening committee, doing that same little tiny groups, coming back to a slightly bigger reopening committee, and then coming up with a number of options as to how they're going to open school. So is that kind of where the plan is going?
Yes, we have an overarching governance committee that I will chair. I'm chairing that committee, and that committee will take the reports from all the subcommittees.
And is there a school committee member that'll be part of that when that happens?
There's not, but we haven't, we haven't convened that group yet, so if there is some interest, you can definitely let us know, and that probably won't be until the end of June, and that'll go into summer.
Right, okay, great. I would be interested in that, I know. Maren, did you want to ask a question before we move on? I know we're taking over your time, Allison.
Well, yeah, I just wanted to follow up, and so it sounded like those small groups are going to be putting forward sort of proposals, or whatever the right correct word is there. Are those going to then be brought to the school committee for us to hear what those are, or is it just going to be taken by this now governing board that you're talking about? I think that at some point, it would be good for this information to come back to the school committee, for us to be able to hear it and, and be able to reflect on it as well.
So, just to be clear, those committees are not charged with decision-making. They're committees for voices to be heard, concerns to be raised, brainstorming to be done, then they're kind of, they're all of their issues, whether they're political issues, financial...
Did you freeze? Allison, you might have to jump out of the meeting and come back, I think you're frozen.
Commissioner of Edu...
Oh, there she is.
The Commissioner of Education, up to this point, has given guidelines on remote learning and school closure. The Commissioner, at the end of last week, said he will be giving us actual directives on 85% of what schools will need to do in the fall.
Yeah.
Not guidance, directives, there's a difference between what that means. So East Hampton will have very little flexibility in what we do. Some of that will be, maybe that 15% that's left over will be kind of where we have the ability to East Hampton-ize kind of what those directives are. So we're looking at these committees to offer us insight into how we can East Hampton-ize some of these directives, how we can calm some theaters, answer some questions that the committees bring to the surface, just so we can share out as much information as we can, so I'm happy to do that, but I think that a conversation with the committee would include what those directives are from the Commissioner as well.
Mayor?
Um, yeah, so I, I would say, oh, Maren or Mayor, sorry?
Mayor, Mira LaChapelle.
Okay. So, one, Allison, I, I think that this is just a great plan, as I love the, the working groups, and certainly appreciate the volunteer time from your staff, talking to other districts and what they're trying to get going. This is, it's just, it's fantastic. Really was worried about this stuff, and, and I think you're right on to do it. Two, I saw some of the commissioners' regulation or directives to open school, and they are, they are substantial, and I, yeah, I mean, I haven't gotten through all of them, I just, I got a peek, and, you know, we got a lot of, we got a lot of conversation and a lot of, a lot of work to do, so these preliminary conversations to get the, the East Hamptonizing and questions that our students and faculty have, I think, is wonderful, so that's all I wanted to add.
Thank you.
Thank you. Now your school building project update?
Okay, so we just finished a school building committee meeting. I think it's been our, it was our first one since February, and we did it on Zoom. It was recorded, for anyone that would like to view it, and basically just received an update, the steel frame is going up, and the progress that they're making is great. Of course, with the school, with Whitebrook closed and the parking lots not being used, they can really take over the entire site, so they've been really able to push forward, and I think for the most part, the weather has been cooperating, so they're plugging away. So the steel is going up, I will remind this committee that we did not do a groundbreaking in May, as we had hoped, so the groundbreaking, we have not scheduled the date for the fall, but we are wishing it would be in the fall. We will, we'll be dependent on, you know, how everything goes, and I will also say that last week, we had, we, meaning the mayor and I, some key people from the city side and the district side, and the MSBA had our first official kind of monthly meeting with the MSBA, who is funding half of the project, and so that, again, was on Zoom. They would normally come out and view the site and walk the site, but they did not do that because of the closure, so that was a successful meeting, it went well, and they will do that again monthly with them for the, for the next, I think, two, at least, they're on Zoom, and then we'll see where we go from there. So that's what I have on the school building update, and do you want me to keep going? I don't think I have anything else under the superintendent update, I think we're, we're plugging away, we're just trying to finish up this year and begin planning for next year. I think the school budget and the city budget will be voted on tomorrow night at the city council, and I, I think the mayor can pipe in on that, if, if I'm incorrect, you know, and we're awaiting numbers from the state, you know, we anticipate that there will be some cuts to our funding, and so we are in the background trying to prepare for what that might look like, and some adjustments, further adjustments, or further alignment we might have to make to our budget if the state numbers come in less than we hope, so the mayor probably has a lot more to say.
Yeah, I just, well, a quick note, tomorrow's vote is by the finance committee on all parts of the budget, and then it goes to full city council, which is next Wednesday. Yes, there, there's been a lot of back and forth with the state and municipal leaders about Chapter 70 and the, the local aid, and what, it's been a big push of ours to keep that number stable, as what we expected, and not go down, and if it can go up, of course, we're fine with that, just so we can start, you know, we can at least stabilize some part of our budget school, which is the biggest, and we'll, the Senate's been doing work on that as well, but, um, yeah, tomorrow, it's this, it's the finance committee vote on the whole budget recommendation, and then it goes to city council the next meeting.
Thank you for correcting me on that.
Oh, please.
All right, and that's all I have, thank you.
Okay. Warrants, payroll, and minutes.
All right. I move to approve the accounts payable warrant dated May 21st, 2020, in the amount of $440,375.52.
I second that.
Roll call vote? Marissa?
Marissa Curry, aye.
Jonathan?
Maren?
Maren Goldstein, aye.
Lori?
Lori Garcia, aye.
Shannon?
Shannon Dunham, aye.
Mira LaChapelle?
Mira LaChapelle, aye.
Cynthia Kuzinski, aye.
I move to approve the school payroll dated May 21st, 2020, in the amount of $508,279.1.
I second that.
Marissa?
Marissa Curry, aye.
Jonathan Schmidt, aye.
Maren Goldstein, aye.
Lori Garcia, aye.
Shannon? Mira LaChapelle?
Mira LaChapelle, aye.
Maryla Chappelle, aye.
Cynthia Kuzinski, aye.
And I move to approve the minutes dated May 12th, 2020, from our regular session meeting.
I second that.
Marissa Curry, aye.
Jonathan Schmidt, aye.
Maron Goldstein, aye.
Laurie Garcia, aye.
Shannon Dunham, aye.
Maryla Chappelle, aye.
Cynthia Kuzinski, aye. Okay, I do have one thing under other. Does anybody else have anything that they would like to put in under other right now? So the only thing... No? No one has anything? Okay. Laurie?
I was just wondering, what did we decide about the bus company? Or companies?
We haven't paid, we haven't paid either one of our bus vendors.
Okay, just because my greatest fears seem to be coming true when you talk about the state budget. So I just wanted to bring that up again. Thank you.
Thank you. Anything else? So the one thing I wanted to do, Allison mailed out our evaluation forms, and I don't believe at our last meeting, we set a date for them to come back to me so that I can prepare a summary and then we share out. So do we want to set those dates now? Does everybody feel comfortable doing that? Okay. Laurie?
If you could wait to finish the school year, I'm just so swamped. I don't know, is there a deadline that we have to adhere to?
Allison, that's, I think that's okay. June 15th, June 18th, you're thinking? That's okay with me. I agree with you. I'm pretty swamped right now. I'm tying up so many IEP meetings, plus my students, trying to get my seniors through, too. So yeah, I would love to have them be in mid-June, if that's okay with everybody. We can do it then. That sound good? So what I'll do is I'll toss out like a due date and then toss out a date to have that back, okay? All right.
Thank you.
Okay, so I move if we go into executive session to conduct some bargaining with the teachers' association. Can we have a roll call vote?
Second.
A second. Thank you.
Marissa Curry, aye.
Jonathan Schmidt, aye.
Maron Goldstein, aye.
Laurie Garcia, aye.
Shannon, you're muted.
I know, I kept going back and forth. Shannon Dunham, aye.
Maryla Chappelle, aye.
Cynthia Kuzinski, aye. Okay, so we are going to move into executive session and stop recording for...
So I'll be removing anyone from the public who is currently in.
Correct.
Farewell.
Bye, Ben. Thank you for coming.
Thank you, guys.
Was there a reason Sarah was with us, other than?
Just to say hi.
Okay.
So shall I remove East Hampton Media?
Yes.
And Ben?